Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Board of Education, the Oak Park River Forest High School. We are meeting virtually this evening. It is currently six P M. And as permitted by Governor Pritzker's executive orders, twenty twenty dash zero seven and twenty twenty dash thirty-three, the Oak Park River Forest High School Board of Education, Cook County, Illinois, will convene a remote special board meeting on January nineteen, twenty twenty-one. Board members, citizens, and staff may participate in the meeting virtually. The state continues to operate under disaster declaration related to the COVID nineteen worldwide pandemic. The Health Department continues to advise the community to practice social distancing, wear face masks, and avoid unnecessary contact with others. And based on the current public health concerns, I, Sarah Spivey, is head of the public body, do not believe it is either practical or prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the Board of Education. I further believe that it is neither practical nor prudent for the public to be present at the public body's regular meeting location. And we will continue to hold remote meetings with updated practices to comply with Public Act one oh one dash six forty that was signed by Governor Pritzker on June twelfth, twenty twenty. I would note for anyone watching, we are having a little bit of technical difficulties, so our videos are not on because we cannot turn them on, not not for any other reason, so forgive us, but this will be an audio-only experience this evening.
Gail, could you please?
Sorry, I'm so sorry. I fixed it. If you'd like to try your cameras, they should allow me to turn on now.
Oh, fabulous.
Cool. Great, thank you.
Fabulous.
Good timing.
But now hopefully everyone understands what it's like to teach to a classroom full of black boxes when people don't have their cameras on, because that doesn't feel real great. So just as an example, you know, what that actually feels like, what teachers actually have to deal with every single day, with those cameras off. Okay, just had to throw that in there.
Thank you, Gina. Gail, could you please call the role?
Happy to. Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martyri?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Ms. Dixon Spivey. Oh, Sarah, we can't hear you.
Yep, yep.
You're muted, Sarah.
Forgive me, forgive me. I was struggling to find the right window. I can't have board docs open and my Zoom open at the same time. So, Gail, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do not.
All right, thank you. And our only agenda item this evening is a discussion of the superintendent's search process. And we do have Hazard Young here this evening so that we can go through some of the details. So I appreciate all of the board members making sort of somewhat last-minute arrangements. Obviously, this is a properly noticed meeting, but it was only set up last week, I think. So Connie, if you wouldn't mind, Dr. Collins, leading us in this, that would be great.
I would be happy to. Thank you so much. It's indeed a pleasure to be here. It's good to see all of you and welcome also to any community members who may be listening and hopefully will be able to see at this time. We'll go ahead and get started, and what we're going to do is, this is our planning meeting, and we're going to talk about what the process will look like and what the different components are. And we need to get the boards, you know, their agreement with the different phases and what we would like to see covered. And so with that, I will begin. The first thing we need to do is to identify someone as the board liaison during the search. It's usually the board president.
Connie, you are muted. You are not being able to be heard.
I'm not.
I can hear.
I can hear.
Yeah.
Gail?
Loud and clear.
Can you hear me? Hugo, can you assist?
We can hear her just fine.
I don't think Gail can hear us.
Oh, maybe.
Looks like there's a problem all the way around.
No.
Is is Gail in her office?
I don't think so. No.
Okay, I'll give her a call.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Dr. Collins, we need to wait a second because she's our secretary.
He's important.
Yeah, we need her.
Hello? I I don't hear anybody.
So, little space. My daughter was going back to school. I decided to bake some chocolate chip squares for her, packed them up nicely, and she left them. What a shame.
Oh, no. Disaster.
You have to mail them to her.
So I, no, 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 they won't last. So so I get the credit for making them, all that good stuff, and I get to eat them. It's it's but there's too many, so I had this.
If only you were here, if we could help you.
Right, I would share with all of you. So.
I'm impressed that you bake.
Yeah. Renaissance man.
That's right.
And since Gail can hear, none of that will be in the notes.
Tom, you know, you know, Tom, I can make a hot meal, too. Peanut butter and jelly on toast.
Yeah.
I just want to also add that while we've been crisis distance learning since March, this type of technical difficulty and having to navigate it on a daily basis all day is also what teachers have been going through. I just want to point that out as well. Like, I just, I just want to make, you know, just want to make it real relevant for what we're doing, that everything we're experiencing, can you imagine having that happen ten times a day and people not be able to hear each other and you having to keep saying, I can't hear you, and then wanting to, I mean, really? Like, if you think that educators don't want to be in buildings, we want to be in buildings, we just want to be in there safely. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Just let me call this room.
So Gina, that same thing happens for, to me, all day long, or the ten or twelve of these that I'm on every day. So it's not just teachers.
That I think that they still have to just wait for you, though, Craig. Try to get middle schoolers to get on board.
Hugo?
Yeah.
Are we, we are being recorded still, correct?
Yes, we are. Would you like me to pause that?
No, 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 no. What I'm thinking is, worst-case scenario, we can continue, and Gail would just have to transcribe from the recording, which isn't a great solution, but it might facilitate, or, you know what? She's on the phone. She could also, I think, call in. Right, isn't that?
That's what I was gonna suggest, Sarah.
I'm working with Gail on that right now, folks.
Thank you.
So tell me where that is. Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yes. Yes. Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Yeah, so Gail's gonna try the the phone option.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Welcome to ZOO. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound. Enter your participant ID, followed by pound.
Gail, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
I think.
Could you do me a favor? Is there any way you could mute your laptop?
Are you speaking to me?
I am. Like, if you're using the phone, if you can mute the laptop so it's not. Yeah, thank you. Perfect. All right. Here we are. Gail, give us a nod when you're ready to go. Okay. Dr. Collins, you were saying about board liaison.
Yes, well, as I said, it's indeed a pleasure, and both Max and I are looking forward to working with the Board of Education and the Oak Park River Forest community. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. I wanted to start off by, one of the first things we need to do is to identify a board liaison. And that's usually the board president, but the board president or someone else could be, other than the board president, can be identified. And so whoever it is that the board would like to be the liaison, and this, you, generally, we communicate with the entire board by email. But when there is a special circumstance that may arise, then we call the liaison. So will that be the board president or someone else?
I'm happy to do it unless there's somebody else who would like to. You know, if there's somebody who wants to, please speak now. Otherwise, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, if you'd like me to take it, because you have a lot, I'd be happy to do it, too, so.
If you wouldn't mind, that would be great.
I'll take it. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Next order of business is to determine the district staff contact person. Up to this time, it's been Gail. And this is someone who will assist us in scheduling stakeholder-focused groups and community forums and distributing notices and invitations. So will that be Gail?
Gail, should that be you or Karen Sullivan or somebody else? I'm sorry, now we really can't hear you.
It looks like her audio is off.
It was lip reading, and she said, I would love to do that.
Unmute and zoom, please.
Can you hear me? I am, I am happy to do that, and I can do that with, with, in tandem with Karen.
Great. Well, you know what? Someone read your mouth, and so we knew what you said. Great, fantastic. Okay. Um, we want to review the search process and the timeline and the opening and closing of the survey, as well as the meetings with the focus group and whether or not we're going to do community forums. So what, usually, we have about fifteen individual individuals who are interviewed, and of those fifteen, the board members are a part of that. We have about twenty focus groups, about two community forums, and any of these can be combined in any way. So we could have more community forums or more focus groups and fewer community forums, and the individuals, you know, it can be decided how we want to move forward with that. Gail, does everybody have a copy of the timeline? So let's, okay, then we can take a look at the timeline. And on the, this is a draft timeline, and as we go through it, if there is something you would like to change and it doesn't work, then we can definitely make whatever changes we need to. We're doing the.
I'm sorry, Dr. Collins, is there any way to screen share that for for folks who are watching from afar? Well, I guess we all are, people who are in the audience.
Okay, let's see.
Chris or Hugo are, is that available? The screen share?
Yes, screen share should be available.
And it's in the agenda, so I
So it's not mine for people?
Be able to.
Let me see what I can grab.
Okay.
What's the name of the file, Gail?
The draft timeline for OPRF District.
That should be the very last page, right?
Yeah, what, the last page? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
You have it?
Yep, I think we're good.
Okay. Okay, great, fantastic. This is showing the advertising services. There's another page right after this one, which is the timeline.
So, Dr. Collins, I don't know what you can see, but we can see the timeline. We're not seeing the ads.
Oh, okay. Well, let me see if I'm on the wrong page here. Think I must have jumped off of. Zoom, get back on. Okay, I think I'm there.
Right.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, with the timeline, what we have, our planning meeting today, then we have scheduled on January twenty-sixth, individual board member interviews with H Y A. Does that work for the board members? If not, we can change that date, or if we're not able to do everyone on that date, we can do some on a different date. We also open the community survey on the same date. And the community survey will be on the district's website for about two and a half, almost three weeks. Then we'll close the community survey, and H Y A will facilitate focus groups from the twenty-sixth until February twelfth. That's almost three weeks. Then we will host community forums, depending on whether or not you want one or two community forums on February eighteenth and the nineteenth. Then there will be a presentation. We will take all of the information from the online survey, as well as from the individual, the focus groups, and the community forums. And we will present the leadership profile report to the board on February twenty-fifth at the board meeting.
Is there a way that we could push out the community survey instead of just having it like, having it static essentially on our webpage? Could, is that something we could push out via email?
Yes, yes, we can get it out there, definitely. And it's important that we also, you know, advertise that it is available so that people will look for it, and we can get as many responses as possible.
Do you want questions now, or do you want questions at the end?
Why don't we go through the engage phase at this point? So what questions, what changes would you like to see?
Do board members have, I I have questions, but I don't want to necessarily go first. Do others have questions?
Should we?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
Sarah. Connie, in terms of the the survey, is, will, is that a survey that delineates the different classes, or if it's, you know, community member versus parent, student, how how is it set up?
That's exactly how it's set up. And we will, you know, determine which groups you want to target. In some instances, it's community members without children at the school. Another group could be students, another group could be parents. So, yes, so there will be groups, and people will be able to indicate which group they fall in.
Okay, but for the, so that's the the community survey, so we, we and that'll be on our website.
Yes. And that's what I was also asked, if we could send out that information through email. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yeah, I mean, just whatever. I I personally think that more engagement is better, right? So if we can facilitate people accessing the survey, however that might be, whether through email or some texting or whatever we want to do, I think that'd be helpful.
Yes. And also perhaps on our, using social media as well, the Facebook page and things like that. Because that may allow for folks to share it, you know, with their networks, if we do it that way. Because I I have that same, you know, concern of a broad swath of our community, but also ensuring that our families and students, either current or incoming, have a, you know, we get their voice represented in the survey as well.
Link could be sent to, you know, everyone that you want to receive the survey, so that I'm sure that there is a group that you send out, you know, emails to as well as social media, and so it can be made available, so that we can get as many responses as possible. And the more we hear from, the better.
It, could it be explicitly sent to the heads of the various parent groups?
Yes. Yeah.
You know, community council, yeah, all of them.
Yes. In fact, even people who attend the focus groups or the forums, we also encourage them to do the survey.
Will a phone call go out from Karen Sullivan? Because there's something about that Karen Sullivan phone call that people are like, oh, Karen Sullivan called. So, you know, can we do that, too, to let people know that it's out there where it is or something? I just know, I just recall the Karen Sullivan phone calls and the immediate attention.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea, especially since people haven't received one in, like, nine months, so.
Okay. Okay, great, fantastic. So with the, is there any concern regarding the dates that have been identified? I just want to make sure that when we're cross-checking the, like, excuse me, when the survey or the focus groups are, that we're mindful of, like, our, if students, I don't know when, you know, they have midterms or they're special, even though it's virtual, there's still things that are going on so that there's enough opportunities for either the focus groups or the forums that we're not interfering with any holidays or anything like that. Because we've gotten those kind of concerns raised before. Question about the administration of the student survey. I'm not saying that it needs to be done during school hours, but is there an opportune time? Like, is there, are there, are there study halls or, you know, that ten-minute advisory piece? Or, you know, is there somewhere where we can really capitalize on getting as much of the student voice as we possibly can?
And the student voice is really important, and I know there have been, you know, in some situations where districts have used advisory time or, you know, taken a time of homeroom or advisory at center and had students to complete the survey during that time. And it increases the number of surveys that we get back.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. In terms of the number of focus groups and community forums, my preference would be to have as many as as possible, right, as many as reasonable. And then to to make sure that we're also including candidates who are running for office so that they also have some, not just input, but also kind of have a feel for how this is going, since at some point they will be, some of the, four of them will be part of this board as well.
Okay. So we can talk about, if we, unless there is additional discussion regarding the dates during the engage phase, we can talk about who will comprise the focus groups and which individuals you would like to have interviewed during this time. So let's talk about that, unless there's any other conversation regarding the dates that have been identified. Okay, so with individual, when we take a look at persons who we speak with, there are a number of groups who are possible, as well as there may be some people who you may feel that it's best that they are interviewed one-on-one, rather than as a part of a focus group. So let's see. So there are some possible groups, our P T A and P T O leaders, other parent advisory groups, for instance, foundations or special ed, any African-American or Latino groups, gifted and talented, school improvement councils, students, if there's a student group that you would like to have interviewed as a focus group, the current superintendent, principals and assistant principals, cabinet teachers, foundation leaders, nonprofit donor representatives, union leadership, important community leaders, groups such as municipal, elected officials, clergy, et cetera, elementary sending district leaders, and any others that the district, as the district sees fit. So any of these.
Yeah, I I think you ought to add the members of the culture climate committee as folks to reach out to.
Okay, members. Thanks, Ralph. I was going there.
Okay.
I would also suggest superintendents of our feeder districts.
Members of the theater district?
Administrators, right, of our feeder districts?
Thank you.
Since since those students become our students.
So when you say administrators, would that be in addition to the superintendents?
Oh, no, not necessarily. I'm sorry, I hadn't realized that those, that those folks were already on the list.
If there are, if any of these that I have mentioned can be combined together, that's fine, we can do that. Because when we take a look at how many groups we're going to have, you know, which ones we fit well together versus which ones, you know, we need to send, see them individually because of the number of people or because of information that they may be sharing. And then my question is, you know, which individuals, either in the community or within the district, do you believe need to be interviewed individually? do you believe need to be interviewed, uh, individually? Outside- Connie, before that, the, in terms of the focus groups, I would, uh, like to su- suggest that we have, um, some affinity groups, um, for, um, our students and our, uh, parents. And I'm thinking about the, um, the African-American Parent Association, um, or there's another group, um, that's in, um, there's a, it's a Facebook book groups, excuse me at this point, but Black Residents of Oak Park. Um, and then also, um, having our, a student group that is, um, having some affinity groups that way. And I'm giving examples of, uh, those two, but of course others as well, just to be able to get, um, as you were saying, um, how people can sometimes, their comfort level in speaking, to increase that and get those perhaps differing perspectives. Okay. So hearing affinity groups. Any other groups that I didn't mention that you feel we need to tap into? And they need to receive a special invitation to be a part of a focus group?
PIMA?
PIMA?
Yeah, they, they raise money to provide musical instruments to kids that don't have them that attend our high school.
Okay.
PIMA.
P-I-M-A. Oh, P-I-M-A.
Mm-huh.
So I'm sorry, Dr. Collins, I, I just want to better understand, do you want us to actually specifically enumerate groups during this meeting? Or are we talking about categories of groups more broadly?
I think that we can talk about them more broadly. And I know that, uh, I can work with Gail to see which groups would fit well together and which ones, uh, wouldn't and even which individuals, if there are individuals that I did not, or groups I didn't mention, that you feel that we need to be sure that we include them, then let's hear what those are. But definitely the grouping and how we're going to, uh, move forward, I can work with Gail on that. So any other groups or individuals that you feel should be interviewed?
Let me just throw it out there, is, does it make sense for there to be any reach out to particular River Forest groups? I don't, I don't know of any in particular, but, um, I just want to make sure that the process is inclusive of everybody and we, we make effort to include groups that are sort of outside our core. So. I, but I don't know, yeah.
Craig, there's a, there's a civic group in River Forest that I'm a member of that meets infrequently. Uh, I'll, I'll noodle on that and, and see if there's any of the specific groups that would be good to reference in.
Okay.
And then, you know, if you think of any others, um, you know, things that we all know and we can work together to see how many groups we end up with. And, uh, here again, even with the community forums, do you want one to, or no community forums?
I would suggest two.
I agree, right, this, um, that's one of the things I, I, I think will allow folks to, uh, feel that there's transparency in the process. Great.
Do we have the imagine group in any way captured? Or remnants of it, or?
Um, yeah, so Dr. Collins, we have a, um, uh, capital, um, planning process that we went through a few years ago that involved a huge number of, of individuals. And I would think that some of them would be interested in, um, also participating, which is, it's called, um, Imagine, OPRF. So, uh, we can help hook you up with, with people who might be interested in talking.
Great. Fantastic. Okay, we'll move on to the next area and, um, which has to do with confidentiality. And what we are, so let's see, we went over, yes, this piece with the, uh, schedule. Let's look at the recruit for, phrase. And in the recruit phase, this is where we're doing the advertising. And, uh, we're recruiting candidates and, uh, here again, people who apply as well as those that we actively go out and recruit for the district. This is where the interviews and screening and reference checks take place and HYA will be doing that. Uh, we will present a slate of candidates to the board, uh, March eighteenth, which would be a special board meeting. And so hopefully that date would work. And the board selecting the candidates for the first round interviews as well as HYA working with the board to identify questions and scenarios, those dates should be March eighteenth also. So that's a typo, March fifteenth is a typo, it should be March eighteenth. So the recruit phase, that's what will be going on and, um, we're going to talk about the advertising. But we are doing a lot of the work and then presenting the slate to the board on the eighteen.
How, how large do you expect this, that slate is at that point in time?
Usually what we bring to the board, and here again, a lot of it depends on how much time the board has because the board has to interview each of these candidates and it's going to take you about forty-five to sixty minutes to interview each candidate. And we need, need all board members to be present when the interviews are taking place. And so usually boards will want, uh, five, six, a maximum of eight candidates. And include them and other factors down there. Uh, because of the time involvement and just really wanting the top candidates to apply for the position. So Connie, um, that's, um, triggered a question for me, um, during you all's presentation, uh, you talked about- I'm echoing, I'm sorry, um, you talked about the, um, the finalists, um, having a, some type of community forum, making a presentation. Would that be the community forums we were talking about? No, the community forum would be where we would be gathering information from the community. Any who may not have made it to any of the focus groups and other people outside of the identified focus groups. That's when anybody and everybody can be a part and share information and answer questions about what they believe the strengths of the district are, what the challenges are, and what they would like to see in the next leader. So that's what the community forum is about. The, uh, looking at, uh, the possibilities of having, uh, a forum or some type of, um, venue for the finalists, which is in the select phase down near the bottom. And it talks about the board conducting, uh, finalist interviews and then possibly holding forums. The forums are optional. It depends whether or not you want the top two or three candidates. Two, uh, go before the public, I've seen it done in different ways and some districts do not do it at all. So that's where you take a look at the finalists and, uh, they are sort of introduced or answer questions during the forum or they share in some way with a selected group, individuals. Okay, thank you, I just was trying to make sure, uh, we weren't overwhelming with forums. And so how does that timeline look for the recruit phase?
I think that's okay.
Okay. So that's how we proceed with that. And then when we look at the select phase, uh, that's when the board, after we have done, you know, the, uh, training on interview questions, et cetera, as well as you've identified, uh, the first round of candidates, then we would do the interviews. And we would, um, then on that same day, which will be March twenty-second, it's going to be a full day, uh, you would narrow the field down to the finalists. So usually the board takes the, um, five, six, or eight candidates. You move to about, uh, two or three candidates that you want to move on for final interviews.
Hugo, would you mind scrolling the page down just a little bit more? Please, thank you.
And so the final interviews are scheduled for March twenty-ninth. And, uh, if you wanted to do a forum or anything with the community, uh, it can be done around that time. Uh, same thing if the board wanted to make a site visit to, uh, these districts and site visitor again, at this time it could probably be virtual, but, uh, there may be a possibility of an in-person. But, uh, site visits are done around this time if you decide to do that. And, um, then we go on, uh, the board would identify the preferred candidate from the two to three finalists on April fifth. The Baker U-Banks would be completed, which is the independent background check that we talked about, which is very, uh, in-depth, uh, check of the, um, background, driving, um, you know, all the record, any record that the candidate may have. So looking at, um, finance as well as, uh, looking at anything that's part of legal that they have gone on. And so the board would get a copy of that and that could either be on one or two candidates. Uh, it depends on what the board decides that they want to do. Uh, then the board will negotiate the contract and name the final candidate and the superintendent on April twenty-seventh. And it takes about ten days for the Baker U-Banks to be completed, that independent background check. And so you would have time to get that information back.
And Dr. Collins, just to clarify, that, that Baker U-Banks background check, that's only done on the one finalist, is that correct?
Done on the one finalist. In some instances, there are some districts that may want it done on more than one finalist. But usually it's only done on the person who has been identified to move forward to be recommended.
And if we felt at some point that we had two close contenders or had some issue with that, is that something that we could decide to do for maybe more than one of the finalists later on in the process?
Yes.
Okay.
And no decision has to be made now. Uh, it is something you can make a decision regarding. Okay, so how is that select phase, how do those dates look?
So how many interviews on the twenty-second, Connie?
On the twenty-second, it depends on how many candidates you decide to interview. So we will bring forward to you from five to eight candidates. You will decide, either you want to interview all of those candidates or some of them you don't find that you want to move forward with. And there may be some that we didn't bring forward because you will have the, uh, portal.
Yep.
Portal, and if you see some candidates in there that you want to ask us about or you would like to interview, that's a possibility also. So even though we bring those names forward, it, the board makes the decision as to whether or not you want to interview all of them or some of those candidates.
So my question is just really, um, let's say it's six, uh, how we get those done in one day?
It may not be one day.
Okay.
It's forty-five minutes to an hour each. Uh, six could be done in one day if, it would be a full day. So it is possible.
Um, well, if we start at six o'clock, it's not happening in one day. So it, I guess it, because the twenty-second is a Monday. So I guess that's what we need to decide as a board, are we gonna, can we, if we, how we manage that?
And Connie, is it anticipated that the interviews would take place in the evening? Or is it typical that they would occur throughout the day?
The evening, it could, uh, it depends on the availability of the board members. So either or.
I, I, to follow up on Craig's, I think it would be smart to budget in one extra day for that.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be good to put two, put two, two days in there and, um, I, I would think it would be advisable, put two days in for the finalists too, because we may or may not want to see them on the same night or at the same time in the same way. I mean, it would be the same kind of interview, but it might be, um, just allow more time, that's really all.
So, are you-
And then, like, sorry, um, then the other question is, um, all right, I'm trying to consider election timing in here too. But, and what do we want to do relative to new board members who are, what, going to be elected on April sixth?
Correct.
Any opinions?
Given, so Gail, the certification of the vote happens roughly a month after the actual election, right? So we wouldn't have new board members sworn until May? If I'm, if I'm wrong, please tell me.
Right, it's the twenty-eighth or eighth after the election.
Okay, so-
It's the last day to certify the results.
So Craig, um, I guess, are you suggesting that they would take part in the final decision or?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm throwing it out there as a possibility that do we want to set up the timing so that new board members have an opportunity to sit in and discussions of the final selection? Even though they're members of the public at the time.
So they wouldn't, I, I mean, I'm just trying to think of sort of procedurally, they wouldn't have a, a voting role because they wouldn't be sworn yet. Is that ac, is that what you're-
That's correct.
-contemplating, okay.
They'd be member, I, and I don't know, do they, so they'd be members of the public at the, at the session, which at this point, I don't know if we have decided is open or closed. And they get to listen and they get to contribute their two cents. They don't get to vote, yeah.
I, I have included them on my list, sir, so they're aware of all the board meetings that are going to be in open session. So they have the opportunity to know that we're talking about this.
Yeah.
And Dr. Collins, you had suggested having a, um, have the finalists be made public, correct?
It's, uh, it's an option. It doesn't necessarily have to occur, some districts decide that when they get down to the last two or three, that they are, uh, public. And, uh, that, you know, invites more information coming in from the community, et cetera, when people know who the, um, who the final candidates are. But not all districts really make the names public. Sometimes it's only once the superintendent is identified that that information comes out.
And even if they were made public, I'm assuming the interviews would still be in closed session because they're employment interviews? Or is that not typical? I don't, I'm not familiar with having them done publicly like that.
Yeah, the interviews are in closed session.
Okay, so, and therein lies the rub, I think, Craig, because I don't, I don't know that we can have non-s sworn members in closed session. Is that accurate, Gail?
We have administrators in closed session all the time.
Understood, yes, but, uh, Gail, is there any-
Oh, you know what, I, I, we've never done that, so just let me say that, so I-
Okay.
A little bit out of line. I, I don't want to give a fast answer here.
Okay, I, I just, I'm, I'm not trying to challenge it, sir, I'm just trying to, I just don't know. And I, sorry, didn't mean to come across that way.
No, no, I'm just thinking that, you know, the administrators who are in closed session are, need, need to be there because it's usually pertaining to their area. So, I mean, it's certainly something that we can discuss, I think we would have to ask legal counsel about it.
Yeah, I guess the first question is, is as a board, do we want, do we feel it is appropriate to have them involved and at what stage? I mean, I've, I've expressed that opinion, but nobody else has said anything, so.
I, I echo and agree with your opinion, Craig, meaning that, um, the more we can have them engaged, you know, the, with, within the confines of the process, I think the better off we're going to be, so. You know, we have to meet within, within what's legal and all that stuff, but, um, there's no reason for my mind not to, um, as long as it's clear who the voters are and what the process is.
You know, in some districts, um, there's been a meet and greet with the finalists where, uh, people were invited, it was by invitation, and, uh, they sort of filled out cards just, uh, sharing, you know, some thoughts regarding the candidates. But here again, like you said, they didn't have a vote or anything like that, but they had an opportunity to meet and to hear from the candidates. So it was like a coffee or something that was held, that's been done in some places.
Could, could, may I ask a question just about, I'm sorry, the, about the-
May I ask a question just about, I'm sorry, the, about the, because the, the decision of whether the um, the forum is public for the finalists is one we need to make now, because that would, would, that would have to be made known to candidates, correct, who were considered or not?
No, it doesn't, we don't need that information right now, it's something that can be decided later.
I, I, well, let me, let me ask it from a question standpoint, because to me, my desire in this process is to do everything we can to assure that we get the best potential pool of candidates, okay? So that's, that's my overarching objective in all we do. How do we do that? And, and your firm, that's your business, is getting the best? And so I'm looking for feedback from that end, and, you know, as we look at each of these steps, does, you know, does making that public enhance or diminish our, our um ability to attract the best pool of candidates?
If there is going to be anything public that takes place with the candidates, it's better that it takes place uh near the end of the process. And if that is the case, those individuals who um, you know, may not have let their community or they would need to let their board know, because there's a possibility they need to become a superintendent in another district. So they should know, but here again, it really, um, there are some candidates who would shy away from uh an open process all the way through, but yet when they get to be one of the two or three finalists, I think it's not unusual for them. I know it's not unusual for them to realize that their name may become public. So that happens, yes. Because we have to do more research, we have to talk to more people in their community about them, and so it's much more likely that the information is going to be out there.
So is it realistic to uh make a decision about open forums at the end? Once we've identified those candidates and actually, you know, talk to them and find out if there's objections? Or shouldn't we go down that path, we should just make a decision?
The board doesn't have to make a decision right now, it is something we definitely need to think about. Uh someone who is uh, you know, retiring from a district and looking for another district would not have as much of a problem with uh information being out there, or someone who is being advanced from uh an assistant superintendent to a superintendent, that would not be an issue. Someone who is very successful, and those are candidates that you want to attract, who are very successful in their district, uh they probably would not want people to know any sooner than what they would have to know. Now, there's a district that uh, you know, we worked with and we told the individuals that if you become one of the two or three finalists, that the information will be public. So the more information that's out there, and it really depends on, um, and like you said, you want the best candidates, so some of the candidates are probably going to come from districts where they have been very successful and their district would not want to lose them. As much as we can keep uh, you know, confidential, uh the better it is. Uh but it's up to the board to decide, but if the board can keep everything confidential up until you get to the finalists, that's great.
Yeah, I think that that, I, I mean, that my assumption, that's how we did it, uh with our last superintendent search, was I don't, I don't think we ever made it public until we had made an, an actual decision. Um Craig, I don't know what your experience was at ninety-seven, or Ralph yours at ninety?
It was the same, we didn't make it public.
Yeah, the same in ninety, we didn't make it public.
I would think that that would gather the, the most and best qualified candidates for us, so that would be my inclination would be to keep it, keep it a confidential process. Um, you know, of course, as it goes on and people get involved in additional interviews potentially with the finalists, they would sign confidentiality packs, et cetera, but I, I think that would be my inclination, I don't know if other board members want to weigh in.
That's my feeling too, that is how we did it in the past and, and it, for all those reasons of not wanting a candidate to um, you know, back out or not complete the process because of feeling some um retribution from their district if we don't pick them as the final finalists, so um I think that that makes sense here as well.
Is there anyone who wants to advocate against keeping it confidential the whole way through?
No, I would, I agree that this is the way to go. I think it's important to have a transparent structure and process, but that doesn't mean that we run the risk of having one or two people who are finalists who, you know, wouldn't even have become finalists because of fear of, of, you know, coming back on them, so I'm in support of this.
Sounds good.
I um, I support it, but e- especially in this case, I would want to be sure that we try to do something at the end that gets uh maybe does a coffee with key community people who are able to meet them and input in, on them. Um, who we, how we decide key is a difficult thing. But then certainly that elected candidates are uh, are included in that and that they have to um, that, that, that they get some input in, say.
It sounds like um that's a suggested way of moving forward near the end, getting some key community people uh to have a coffee, some interaction with our finalists, where is, where is confidential?
Um, and Dr. Collins, as to the actual finalist interviews, uh in my experience, we had, we, we did those on separate nights, uh which I think Craig mentioned earlier, and I'm not sure that we actually kind of decided it, but I, my strong preference would be to do it on separate nights, because I think it's just too important a decision to have, you know, an overwhelming experience of two or three candidates at the same time. Um, of course, last time we were able to do a dinner, et cetera, it's, we're in a different era now. Um, but I think certainly separating them out that way would be helpful in terms of processing all the information.
Questions regarding?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
No, any other questions regarding the select phase or any other ideas?
Um, I just was going to add, is it possible that um when we get a little more narrowed down, um, we actually had students involved in some interviewing of final candidates, will that be part of this?
And that's a decision that the board has to make, when you uh identify, if you're going to do something, whether it's a coffee or have some community members uh, you know, meet the finalists, then you could have students involved with that. So it all depends on, like, every then, I guess when I worked on the search in Atlanta, uh people, everybody who was a part of a group like this, uh signed a confidentiality uh letter, and there were some students who were a part of it, and they kept everything confidential. So it's something that is possible, if that's what we would like to do.
I, I definitely would like for us to do that, I'm not sure the rest of the board, but I would.
I agree.
I do too, and I think that's what we did last time, didn't we have, um, we had groups that, that um had questions and, and filled out cards that were group interviews?
Yeah.
Thank you, I, I'm, I forgot about the dinner, Sarah, till you said it, so I'm doubting my memory right now.
I liked that dinner, that was nice.
It is now that I remember it.
Ninety-seven, we, oh, go ahead.
Any other questions? Okay, then uh there's a transition phase, which uh here again is an optional phase, but one where HYA could work with the board and the uh new superintendent to review uh what the community has said and what people have identified as the strengths and the challenges and uh just what it was they were looking for, so that we're getting more specific and, so that can either take place or not take place. So that is optional, transition phase.
So typically, that's something we do in conjunction with the IASB, uh in our board governance retreats. Uh, and the superintendent goal is not necessarily a hundred-day plan, um, but those sorts of things, usually we would do with our IASB wrap in closed session. Um, is that similar to what you would offer? I would think that if it was HYA, though, it would not be closed session.
And it, you absolutely right, it would not be closed session, and if it's something that you do through IASB or uh, you know, through the School Board Association, that's fine. You just make people aware that that is something that we all.
And, and I don't say that to foreclose the option, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding, do board members have a preference as to how we do it, whether it's with IASB or HYA? I suppose we also don't need to decide right now, but certainly something to think about.
I, I don't have a preference, but I, I would have to see the, how we feel about the whole process before making a, a choice there.
We're ready to move on, uh going back to the agenda. Uh, we talked about, uh we'll sort of finalize, and Gail and I will talk about the groups, the own, the survey groups online, and then whether or not you want the survey translated into another language. Uh, we provide it in Spanish, if you would like that. Uh, if it's a language other than Spanish, then uh there is a cost for that.
I, I, I think our English language learner population is actually pretty small in Oak Park, not to say that it wouldn't, I mean, certainly we want everyone included, no matter how small their group might be. Um, so I, I think Spanish is our predominant language, is that accurate, Gail? In terms of ELL?
I believe so.
Yeah.
We can do the, the Spanish translation, if you would like that. Yes, I think we should, definitely.
Yeah, what, what do you, what do you, I'm not exactly sure what you mean, Connie, translate?
Meaning that the survey will be presented.
Oh, yes, yeah, sorry, for sure.
Well, so that um, you know, both languages can be available.
Yeah, thanks.
We talked about uh the number of candidates that are to slate, but here again, that's just something to think about. You just need to know, the more candidates there are, the more time uh it will require. Internal candidates. Uh, some boards express a preference to look outside the district. Uh, with internal candidates, we need to know how you want us to proceed. We treat internal candidates usually as we would any other candidate, except HYA will personally interview and screen all internal candidates unless the board suggests otherwise. So what are your feelings regarding internal candidates?
I would think we would treat them the same as external candidates, I don't know if others have thoughts on that?
I, I guess I agree with one caveat, um, I, I, I guess I'd like to know who in, the internal candidates are if they apply and don't make the final group. I'd just like to know what, you know, some transparency around internal candidates.
Yes, that information would definitely be available, you would let know all internal candidates who are part. And they would be um, you know, matched up against external candidates unless you said you wanted something different.
No, I think that's right.
Candidate expenses. Um, this has to do with reimbursing slated candidates for travel to interviews. I don't know if you would be doing everything virtual and if you would just have the finalists come in uh for a meeting with the board, so, um, and if candidates did come in, uh is the board willing to reimburse the candidates for travel for the interviews?
I think.
What we're finding a lot of is that boards are not reimbursing unless you are a finalist.
Oh, I'm gonna come back to my same question I keep asking, which is, if that will deter us from getting the best candidates, um, you know, that's one thing to weigh, and then, and as you mentioned, what is industry, you know, what, what are others doing? But I would want to know, again, I would want to make sure every action we take is to assure that we get the strongest candidates that fit what we're looking for. And if we're taking baby steps or doing little things to, to go against that, we're trying to save a dollar and, you know, not um hire the best superintendent that we need for the long term, so.
And most districts for the two to three finalists, the board will pay their expenses. So is that okay, or any other thought?
I think so.
Uh, I
I agree with Tom.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say certain, I would agree with the two or three finalists, but uh i- if there is a request of some sort that has to do with, and I don't know what it would be, that has to do with travel to Oak Park by some candidate who, I don't know, um, i- is beneficial, I just think that decision should come to the board. Um, that's my opinion, I, I want the other board members to chime in, but I don't want to do anything, if there's a good candidate and coming to Oak Park makes them interested in staying in the race, then I think we should try to facilitate it.
I'm fine with that, and, and Craig is our volunteered liaison. Um, I think Dr. Collins can, can let you know, and then as appropriate, we can kind of address it as a board.
Okay, I think that's fine, yes.
So Dr. Collins, you know, I think it all, of course, depends largely on, on what state we are in in terms of public health, but is it typical that the interviews are being, are conducted in person even for the initial rounds?
Uh, in some instances, uh, and in others, no, so it just depends on what people feel comfortable with. Here again, if someone is traveling from a distance and they have to fly or, you know, use some type of public transportation, even if they feel comfortable, you know, getting on a plane uh at this point, so um, you know, many times the first round, they have been virtual, and then the finalists have come in. And everybody has been six feet apart, and it's been happening that way.
So the ultimate, the person ultimately selected will have had three total interviews, is that correct? A pre-interview and then the slate brought forward and then a final round, okay?
Uh, just one other comment on this topic that's in my head is that, you know, if we're, and again, I think a lot of this is gonna hinge upon what it is that we come up with when we say this is what we were, we're looking for, which to me is the whole meat of the matter, um, especially when we talk about internal candidates. I mean, that should answer a lot of those questions. As it relates to the expense issue, you know, if, if we truly want a national search, then this discussion, this decision could um inhibit candidates from afar, from, you know, pursuing it, or, or I guess, let me ask, could it, could it inhibit them from pursuing it, whereas for someone who's local, um, it's a different story?
It's always a possibility, and um, you know, here again, as I said, in many instances, candidates for round one will pay their own expenses, uh in some instances, districts will pay, but it's uh, and I think if somebody is really interested in a position, I don't think they would have a problem paying uh their expenses. and I think if somebody is really interested in a position, I don't think they would have a problem paying their expenses. But those are questions that we can ask individuals and we can let the board know. And I think, even as we said on this, you know, slide, that this decision can be made at a later date. It's not something that has to be made right now.
Yeah, I guess something to think about, to be equally fair to every candidate, should we say, should we consider that the first round is going to be by Zoom? It's just, you know, it just is, because in the interest of our commitment to safety and in interest of fairness to all candidates who all have a different spectrum on how comfortable they feel about traveling, do we want to make it even?
I actually agree with Craig. I think it makes it equitable, yeah.
I agree that, with that totally.
So first round virtual and second round in person, is that correct?
I, so I struggle a little bit with making it, with requiring anyone to appear in person, especially since we have no idea what, you know, March is going to look like. Hopefully, it looks a lot better. But I think maybe we should wait on that to decide, so we can take chart the course of the pandemic a little bit more. But also just be mindful, I don't, I don't want to make anyone, you know, who might have health issues expose themselves unnecessarily.
Yeah, I agree with that, Sarah, but I would really struggle with a finalist candidate. Us selecting a candidate who'd never been to Oak Park.
Yes, I think for the final round, yes, Craig.
Yeah. I mean, the last three candidates, assuming we had three finalists, they would, they would all have to come to Oak Park.
I would agree with that, and we can make it safe.
Yeah.
I would agree.
I'm a little sticky on that one, but I will go with consensus. I'm just thinking of the potential of, you know, someone that may have a chronic illness. Are we?
I agree, Jackie. I think, maybe as a policy, we say they have to come here, but we have to, we might have to adjust.
And I think also, we are dealing, today is January 19th, and we're talking about April. So I think, or March, March even, you know, we have a little time, and I'm concerned. We don't know the direction. We know there's a trajectory happening right now with the pandemic, but we don't know what it's actually going to look like. So I would feel more comfortable making, if we were going to have a final decision on that, I agree that I would appreciate that they would come in person. But I also would not want people to feel as though they had to risk their life, and we don't, we're not clear yet what's going to, what it's going to be by then, so.
Right, I agree with all that.
And I think the, you know, the important thing is that you don't have to make a decision right now, so we can wait and see what's going to be best, the closer we get to that time. Advertisement language, I can work with the board liaison or with Gail or whoever does communication in order to decide on the language for, that will be posted on the HYA website for the advertising language. And we want to post the job on the website as soon as possible. Any questions about that?
Dr. Collins, is that like a full job description, or is it something shorter?
It's something shorter, yes. We have the information out there, because once the leadership profile is completed, we also post that on the website. So that everybody knows exactly what the community and the board is looking for. But for right now, to get it out there, so that people know that there is an opening.
And when you say as soon as possible, is a week, does that seem appropriate, or are you asking for something sooner?
Really would like to get something out there this week, if possible. Like I said, even if it's just, you know, some information about the district. Doesn't have to be long, but just something so that we can post that this position is available and that interviews will be taking place. So, very general.
Gail, I assume we have something that we used last time and something that we sort of use generally when posting cabinet level positions? That describes the district, et cetera. I would think Karen Sullivan probably has something that we could use in this situation.
Great.
And Craig could review that then, too.
Gail, did you say something to Craig?
I said, and I said Mr. Isley could review whatever it is as well.
Yes. Did you want to make sure that it's up to date? So that's fine. Okay, any other questions regarding the advertisement language? Not the advertising package. There is a, an attachment with that, and we were recommending package number one. And that is a package which, which is 1950. And there is a print ad in Education Week, an online listing in Education Week, as well as top school job site. And it would be on top dual school job site as well as Ed Week for 30 days. Online showcased ad on Ed Week and on top school jobs homepage for seven days. And we also, and then in addition to that, it would be on the Equra site as well as Twitter, LinkedIn. I would suggest that the district also put it on its social media accounts. And then we also are recommending that you take a look at the, there's an extra piece which allows advertising with NAPSE, the National Alliance of Black School Educators, as well as ALAS, which is the Latina Association of Superintendents. And that part for those two groups is $520. So for the other, as far as the print, as well as the, you know, social media and the other sites, it's 1950. And we were recommending, and that's package one, which is the least expensive of the three packages. And we felt that doing that along with the NAPSE and ALAS, that that would be enough.
I think that sounds reasonable. Do others have opinions on this?
I just, the only question I have, if you have these three different packages, have you tracked whether or not utilization of package one, two, or three results in a higher number of highly qualified candidates applying, or no?
I will tell you that most districts take package one. And we do get highly qualified, because, you know, most educators read Ed Week and subscribe to Ed Week. And then even with AA SA, superintendents and other central office leaders and members of AA SA. And so they are getting the information through those sites, and they check those. Anyone who is interested in what job opportunities are out there, they're checking these all the time. HYA, you know, with the information we have on our site, it also pulls in people who may be looking at job opportunities from other search firms, because we put all of them on our site. So I find that we get a really good number of applicants for our positions, and especially for a district like this one. I think the package one would yield the results that you're looking for.
Any opinions to the contrary, or?
No, I support the, I mean, I, I trust their recommendation on what they do. That's their business, so.
Same. Same here.
All right.
Go back to the agenda. Application materials. We ask that, you know, all of the applicants submit a full resume. We also ask that they submit references, three references, which contain names, email addresses, cell phone numbers. We ask that they have a cover letter stating why they're seeking the job and what makes them the right fit for the school district. And we also ask, and this is where I need your input, that they respond to one or two prompts related to board priorities. So in some instances, it may have been just willing to getting some information on how they have successfully addressed the opportunity gap, or there may be some other question that you want to use, one or two questions that you want to use as a prompt for the applicants to respond to. It gives you an opportunity to see their writing style as well as getting some information on how they may have addressed some areas of concern that OPRF may have. And if there's anything else that you'd like for us to have them include in their materials, we can do that.
Anyone?
I like the prompts. I just want to make sure I do recall last time that, and maybe it wasn't a superintendent, maybe it's been another search, but not necessarily getting fully fleshed out. So having something that says, you know, with evidence or, or not just a general description of something that's been done, but a little more detail. And that may just be how it's worded. I just note that we did receive some that were not, that were glowing and like, oh, that sounds great, but it didn't really, you know, dig in a little bit, and there wasn't a lot there. So it's the writing sample, but also some, you know, concrete things that you've had, you know, that you worked on.
That you have been successful in addressing some of these issues.
Or success, and also, you know, I want to hear the, you know, the, if it's something that, this is what we tried, this didn't work, we pivoted to this, however it works, but, so that it doesn't have to be a thing of, this, you know, that it has to be some flowery, and flowery isn't the right word, but, you know, rosy picture that's lacking some details, because someone doesn't want to talk about challenges. I mean, I think we want to see how people have worked through things as well.
Yeah, I agree. I like that.
Can I add something to that, too? I really appreciate that, Jackie. I, I would love to see, not only their, what they've done with their pivots and what they've had to do to make changes, but I'd also like to see some, some level of planning, some level of understanding of what, you know, I would actually like to see a plan by them. Something about how they would address some of our equity concerns and relevant experiences of what they've done, whether those things worked or not. But what they might do differently. I really want to make sure that they have a full understanding of who we are and what's been tried and what's been done, and where they think, what makes them think they actually have the ability to make that change happen. So I really want to see some detail.
Anyone else? Thank you, that's helpful.
Can I add one more thing? Also, because we're in, we're finishing up this project, you know, like there, you know, we're going to have the whole new space and there are additional projects coming up, you know, there's, I really want to make sure that there's some conversations that some, some kind of question relative to their managing of projects and development of infrastructure, like actual structures and buildings and teams that they've worked with in development of that.
And this might be getting too much into potential interview questions, but I'd also be interested in knowing about their crisis management skills and how they've handled a crisis as well in the district that they're coming from.
Shouldn't that be even, so, we're asking them to tell us what they've done already, not what they potentially will do here. Is that correct? Because obviously, they need to get on the ground here before they can thoughtfully get into where they want to lead the district going forward. So I think all this has to be looking back at what they've done. And to your point, Sarah, possibly their response to COVID and how it impacted them from a crisis management standpoint would be a specific example that we all have familiarity with. That they can maybe talk about how they dealt with COVID and how it impacted their educational environment and their administrative responsibility.
And I'm sorry, not to put too fine a point on it, I'd also be interested in knowing how they interact with the public and how they sort of interface with their communities in terms of communicating during a crisis, because I think that's something that's especially relevant in our district.
And actually, I just want to push back a little bit on Ralph's statement that, absolutely, we want to hear what they've actually done, accomplishments, things like that. But I want to know how those accomplishments will translate into action in our district. I think that there are, there's plenty of information available. There's plenty of data available about who we are, what they, what has been tried at this, in our district for the past however many years. If they can't come with some ideas, I think that that would be amiss, because I feel like, you know, it would, we just, I would like to see, I would like it to be a both and. I would prefer that we have definitely experience of what they've done and then how they feel that if that experience is actually going to make changes happen here. Because as we've said repeatedly, the changes that are happening slowly need to happen faster. And what we're looking at as far as equity and, there's so many pieces, I really want them to bring it, that's all. And I don't, I think just only having them talk about what they've done instead of what they think could potentially happen here based on what they've done, we're missing that, if they don't, if they don't hit it off.
And I think.
Right, but that's a conjecture, that's a conjecture question, Gina. And to be fair to these candidates, the Culture Climate Committee has been asking the administration to deliver a summary of everything that's been done here and an analysis of it from an effectiveness standpoint, since there's been a Culture Climate Committee, and that hasn't been produced. So, I mean, to some extent, it's kind of unfair to ask an applicant to understand what's going on in this district until they're in this district. I mean, I can see them talking generally about how they would apply their experiences to what they can glean about OPRF High School based on their review of what we've done and where we've been. But I honestly think they can't get too specific until they are really in there, they're kicking the tires, they're talking to the people, and they're understanding where the barriers really are. And I want the process to be fair to the applicant. So I guess I have a slightly different view of that. I think they can speak in generalities, Gina. I think it'd be very difficult for them to, they could say generally, we've done, I've done this in my past, and I believe that translates to improving things in the Oak Park milieu for the following four or five reasons. But, you know, they, they may or may not be right about that. And they may or may not be right about that. They may not even be able to figure that out until they're here. So I just want the process to be a fair one for the applicant and one that gives them enough room to come on board and learn as they lead, which I think is an important part of leadership.
I have to, I agreed with Gina, and I'm basing that on even our last superintendent search where, you know, that is a part of it. I was most impressed with candidates that came forward that had done their homework and knew some of, you know, knew what was going on in our district, had. and knew some of, you know, knew what was going on in our district, had talked to people, had, you know, they came ready. And I, you know, I don't think this is a contract where they lay something out and it's, you know, that's what we expect them to do. But I think that offering, it may be general, but it may offer some things that I've done this here. I could see this working here because of your demographics or things like that. And of course, everything is, you know, getting connected with your community as well as the team that you're leading. But I I want to know what 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 kind of things that issues you see that we presented because it's all there. And, you know, what are some potential ways that perhaps we haven't thought about it? And that happened last time as well. We we learned a lot and certain questions we didn't even know we should have been asking. And it was because we had that part in our process.
And what you just described to me, Jackie, didn't sound different than my my take on it. They could have a general opinion on how they're going to apply their knowledge to our milieu. But they cannot be expected to have a specific series of steps that they're ready to implement day one when they walk on the job and and a detailed plan. Because frankly, that's putting the cart before the horse. They have to, they have to get in here and understand what's going on before they could actually come up with an actionable plan, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't know that that's what Gina was suggesting, though. I heard something much more, and Gina, I don't want to speak for you, but I, that was not my understanding. It was much more along the lines of what you and Jackie are discussing. And I also feel like this wasn't something that was an initial prompt that we did last time, but it was something that was maybe for round two. That they did a presentation for us.
My question, as I hear this dialogue going to the agenda, is we're on a section called application materials, at least from the agenda. And so, you know, the, this one focuses on for the, for the written materials that they're going to be providing us. Is there anything beyond the basics, which which I, you know, I think, you know, a couple of questions that could further help the initial screening process, which is the topic at hand versus in first and second round interviews, what, where do we want to really drill? And I would agree with what Jackie said that, you know, that's when, you know, that's when they have a chance to show what homework they did, et cetera. So it's how do we fit all these things into the process? I think there's a general consensus. We want, we really want, you know, to get down into the details and we want tough answers. How do we sequence it?
You know, you're absolutely right because we are just talking about, you know, what the packet will look like. And a lot of what you're asking need to be generated from questions that are asked moving forward during the different rounds. And even when we do the screening, we'll be asking some questions. And I think the idea of even as you get to a certain level, having some evidence or some presentation so that you can see how things tie together. So those are all options and things that can be done, but this is just one piece of the whole pie. And, you know, so there are opportunities during the screening as well as during the, we'll be asking a lot of questions that are related to the leadership code to see how tightly aligned they are to that. And then you have an opportunity during your interviews to dig deeper into what it is that these candidates are able to do and their ability to transition to OPRF.
And and that's exactly right. So I guess my my issue was just more, and Tom said it better, would be a sequencing thing, what could be the in the in the initial materials versus what we pull out during the interview process.
Next area is, and thanks for sharing that information, is all wonderful discussions and items that are important to the district and just really to know what this, these individuals have done. Salary and fringe benefits. This is something that does not have to be decided tonight, but you need to start thinking about it. So and we want you to think about the full package, not just the salary, but also the benefits and everything that would be a part of it. Because as we start screening candidates, this is a question that we're going to receive. Any questions about that?
At what point would you want us to give you a range?
I would say that if we have information before, at least if it's a ballpark figure, something that we can tell candidates once we, let's see, the screening. Maybe by the first of February, so in a couple of weeks, if you could give us some information. If there's something you want us to do as far as gathering some information on superintendent salaries, then, you know, we could do that. But if we can have some information in a couple of weeks, that would be great.
Tom, is this data that we already have or do we need it updated?
Yeah, I mean, I, so my my reaction to this one is, one, we have, you know, when when we've done our superintendent compensation review, we have a a range. We have data that's out there. So I don't think we, there's nothing we don't need to gather. We certainly need to refresh it. And I also fully agree that when we've looked at this, we we do look at total comp. It has to be, you know, all of the pieces to the puzzle. So there's nothing here that, to me, is is outside of what we would want to do.
Right.
Um, there's a, there's a memo that was sent out with sort of supporting Joy Lynn's, you know, annual process that that I think I I just, while we were talking, I went and looked up that I I have it. I will send it to Gail and have her send it out, which will give everybody sort of the the NWPA and the local ranges. And, you know, then we can have a conversation about it.
That sounds great. Thanks, Craig.
Residency expectations. Is there an expectation that the superintendent live within the Oak Park River Forest attendance area?
I think it's always nice, but I would hate to lose a candidate simply because they live in Forest Park, for example.
I agree, Sarah. It would be great. And if they, you know, if they have considerations to move here, I don't know, I just, it would be great to have someone who lives in our area. But if I would not want to miss out on someone fabulous just because they don't.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We have never had it, so, right? As a requirement?
Right. Yeah, we never have. I mean, Dr. Sawyer lived in the city, so.
Right. So I'm just saying that that would be a change in practice, which I think, I would also think it would be highly desirable. But I think there's a bunch of, you know, what ifs, so.
I know when I came to the elementary district, basically the board decided that if I moved within Oak Park, they would pay my moving expenses. And if I didn't move within Oak Park, I would really pay the expenses. So it's different ways to, you know, look at it. So I'm in Oak Park.
Makes perfect sense.
A good way of doing it. Right in center.
Um, the last point, unless there are other things that you want to discuss, has to do with, and we sort of talked about this, and this isn't something that needs to be decided at this meeting, but it, point number 17 is immediately with the finalists. And so, you know, you can continue to ponder. You want that to look like and go forward, but it is something that you need to think about, but don't have to have that information right now. I was hearing that, you know, there is a possibility that you want some type of involvement with them. And so we can further define that as time goes on. Okay? Anything else you might like to discuss? One other thing that I did, I forget to mention is that is that we have the option of the applications coming in through Frontline and setting that up. Or we could do it as we've done with some other districts where on the HYA website or anybody who's interested in the district, they send their materials to Max McGee. And he collects them and, you know, we do it that way. So those are two options. I don't know if you have a preference. You can do either. But we have done that with a number of districts where the applications have come to Max and all of the information we have pulled it together.
Is there any reason to not do it that way?
Not that.
I'm not familiar with the, is the other platform is called Frontline?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with that.
Or is a formal, is an online program that can be used? But we have found that we have done just as well when people have sent their applications to Max and we collect them that way.
I don't have any preference. I don't know if anybody else does.
I like Frontline. Well, just I'm 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 familiar with it.
Gina, did you say you like Frontline? Okay. Could you say more, Gina?
Yeah, well, I just, all the places I've ever worked have Frontline in some way, shape, or form. And so I find it to be very user-friendly to navigate and, you know, reliable. So I've just, I'm just familiar with it as a product from my end of things in in almost every district I've ever worked in.
People, you know, just will adopt their information, their documents into, you know, Frontline. And you can find them wherever they are, based on the person's name, et cetera. And so you can see when they have submitted everything, if they're missing some documents and things along that line. So both are good options. It just depends on if the board has a preference for one versus the other.
What was the other one? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Basically, that the applications come to HYA specifically to the president of HYA, to Max. And then.
Is there, is there a loss for Frontline? Does it stream when the process? Like, because what I'm curious about is if it streams, the process, that we voted to at one point take on a system that was going to make things more equitable with our HR piece. I'm wondering, does it like streamline or do any of those functions that make it more useful in the process?
As I said, you know, we found them both to be useful. It is a system that is set up, is used by a number of school districts as well as other organizations. And so I have nothing against Frontline. It's just an option that you have. It can be one or the other.
But you all have your own, you have your own system?
Yes.
Okay, I'm cool with your system. Yeah, I don't have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that part.
Yes. Any other questions?
Any questions from anyone? No? All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Collins.
Sure, definitely. And I will pull all of this together into, you know, summarizing what it is that was said. I'm sure I'll probably have to listen to the recording to be sure that, because we've talked about a number of things, to be sure that I have it. And then basically I will start working with Gail to, and go try to get these groups set up and get the online survey going and just start moving everything forward. And as well as the advertising, not the advertising, but the, just information about the school district that we want to put up on site.
And I I don't want to necessarily go around, Gail, but I might suggest reaching out to Karen Sullivan as well, since she has done many focus groups for us over the years and probably has like a ready list of folks that she, you know, methods for pushing it out, et cetera, as well as the information for the actual posting.
Yes, great. Okay, wonderful.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Oh, and Craig, thank you for being willing to take on the liaison. I really appreciate that. My days are crazy. So is there a motion to adjourn?
You'll move.
Second? On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for bearing with our tech issues tonight, too. Take care.